Call is meeting in order. Tonight, we're going to be led and pledged by Luke Johnson.
I was allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Luke. We could have a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Approval of agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Blair and a second by Mr. Holliday. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Approval of consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Young and a second by Mr. Neffler. Any further discussion on this? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Visitors, we've got, looks like we've got five visitors this evening. Would just take them in order, I think, the way Ms. Michael's got them, I guess. If you would, just pronounce your name and we'll give you three minutes. And I believe Mr. Evans will, if you're close to winding down, or not close to winding down, Mr. Evans, he'll just remind you and everything. So first up, we've got tonight, Mr. Roy Grady.
Yes, sir, that's like Rosie over eighty.
I'm sorry?
That's like Rosie over eighty. Good evening, sir. Do you realize your own heritage as an American citizen? That is a documented fact that this country is founded on Judeo-Christian beliefs, that our forefathers came here to escape persecution and obtain civil and religious liberty. For two centuries, the colonists followed principles of biblical reasoning and how to relate it to the real life. Early American Christians and non-Christians were trained from the Bible and held to a biblical worldview, quite the opposite of what we teach in today's classrooms with self-centered humanistic worldview. Note that a biblical worldview provided a free and prosperous America. One's worldview is a set of presuppositions that underlies all decisions and actions. This determines our thinking patterns, which influences our actions for the conscious or unconscious, and it determines our own destiny and that of the society in which we live. The pilgrims consistently followed Christian truths and principles. The ability to reason from the Bible and to relate its principles to every area of the life was characteristic of America's founders. Colonial Americans exemplified qualities of personal and national greatness because of their Christian education. To restore liberty and greatness to this America, we must restore Christian education to our American schools. Abraham Lincoln wrote, "The philosophy of the schoolroom in one generation will be the philosophy of government in the next." Colossians 2:8 says, "See to it that no one takes you captive through philosophy and empty deception according to the tradition of men, according to the elementary principles of the world, rather than according to Christ." In other words, our worldly philosophy brings captivity. Many of you may have Christian roots and are familiar with the Romans 12:2. Do not be conformed to this world, but be transformed by the renewing of your mind, so that you may prove what the will of God is, that which is good, acceptable, and perfect." It seems many educated scholars read this as removing of your mind. A biblical approach to education reveals the source, origin, and purpose of the whole world history as the purpose of God and his plan for mankind. In 1784, Ben Franklin addressed the House of Representatives. The people of the United States, from their early history to the present, have been led by the hand of kind providence and are endowed by the countless blessings of past and present and dependent for continued prosperity and the future upon Almighty God. The great vital and conservative element in our system is the belief of our people in the pure doctrines and divine truths of the gospel of Jesus Christ. And I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grady. Next, we've got Ms. Pam King.
Good afternoon. My name is Pamela King. I've been a resident of Rutherford School for seventeen years. I have grandchildren and great-grandchildren in Rutherford County Schools. I'd like to address the issue of the textbook commission. There are seventy-four books that have been approved by the State Board of Education for the use in our schools. I'd like to point out that approved does not mean recommended. It simply means that according to the committee that researched these books, they met the state standards. As you know, textbook advocates have spent many, many hours reading each and every book from cover to cover, and our comments are all posted online. These comments were also included in the list of books that were sent to the local school boards all over Tennessee. I sent everybody yesterday a list of the books, but I do have a list right here of seventy-four books. My questions regard the Tennessee, the committee that's going to look at the books. I'd like to know, number one, who appoints the committee? Who's in charge of appointing the committee? How many members will there be? Because I know that we had numerous people and we spent a thousand hours or more reading cover to cover all these seventy-four books. When will the committee be appointed? What are their credentials and what training will they have? And at what point will the parents be allowed to have an input into the process? Here's one very small example of some of the huge amount of inaccuracies that we found in these books, and these should bother people. There's one book that's a world history industrial revolution. It's a Pearson edition. On page thirty-two, there's an illustration, and at the top of the page, the illustration is described as Muslim scholars studying with the Greek philosopher Aristotle. In fact, Aristotle died in 322 B.C. Since Muhammad invented Islam after the beginning of the seventh century, this illustration is over nine hundred years in error. That's in a schoolbook that our children are being taught. The importance of this misrepresentation is that it presents a purely fictional association between Islam and the actual foundations of Western philosophy and the development of mankind's objective approach to research. I'm making this short today, I just want to close with one quote. "Give me four years to teach the children, and the seed I have sown will never be uprooted." And that is by Vladimir Lenin. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. King. Let me just, before we go ahead further, let me just make a comment that at the end, when we have general discussion, Mr. Odom, he will address some of your concerns, Ms. King, so I just wanted to bring that out. Next, we've got Mr. Scott Moore.
My name is Scott Moore. I live in Christianity, Tennessee. As you know, this has been a very long and drawn-out process. We would not be involved in this if we did not care about the education of our children. That's our only goal, is to make sure that they're getting accurate information and factual information as they are at a very impressionable age. As we've gone through this process, we started here, we went to the state, the textbook commission, we've been involved with them. Unfortunately, they have approved these books. It was three to two vote, as you know by now, and unfortunately, that means that these textbooks are going to go into a six-year cycle if they are approved. You also know that you have the power to file a waiver and approve other textbooks. I know that Mr. Reed is going to talk about that later, but we know, because we've been told numerous times by everybody at the education committee, that that is possible. And I am imploring with you to give that strong consideration. I'm imploring with you to actually pass a waiver. When you yourself, when your own eyes, look at these textbooks, and I hope that you will take the time to do that, I'm not expecting you to look at seventy-four textbooks like we have, but when your own eyes see what's in some of these textbooks, I believe that it will alarm you, just like it has alarmed the state legislator. On Tuesday, when we went before the Senate Education Committee chaired by Dolores Gresham, Senator Gresham, when that day was over, their eyes were opened to the horrors that are in these textbooks. They, almost to a man and woman, said that the system is broken and it needs to be fixed. January, there will be new legislation passed that will change the system, but that's too late for the textbooks that have already been approved. You and you alone have the power to make a difference at this point. No one else can. It's already passed, it's already out of their hands. So it's up to you to make a difference and show that you care about what goes into these children's minds. I implore you to give this serious consideration and pass a waiver.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Next, we have Mr. Tommy Miller. Okay.
Good evening, gentlemen and Ms. Blankenship. I wanted to let you know something about what went on on Monday and Tuesday up at the state legislature, and perhaps some of you had the opportunity to watch the video. It is posted on the website. If you haven't already, I urge you to go there. It is rather lengthy, but the thing that was interesting, I thought, about the two days is how many times they stressed that it would fall on you folks, on the local districts, to actually judge these textbooks. It sounded almost like an excuse for their failings at the state level, to not have done the proper job of actually reading the books. It came out quite clear between the meeting on October 23rd at the textbook commission and the two days of testimony at the Senate hearing, that the books were not really read for content at all by the reviewers. They had reviewers there that they interviewed, and they admitted they were checking for compliance with state standards, and that did not mean that they were looking for bias or accuracy or truth or both sides of every issue, only that the particular subjects that were listed on the left side of the page as state standards were addressed somewhere in the textbooks. So it seems that perhaps we, in our little group, well, our group did expand to almost a hundred people by the deadline of September 7th, but that we may have been the only ones to have read those books, and that's just not good enough. We're willing to do our share, but we expect a little more at the state level, but now it comes down to you folks at the local level. And we're intent to go out and let every district, every school district, know what their obligation is, and I know it's not easy. I have been engaged in trying to find alternative books ever since it became apparent how egregious these books were. I thought, well, they're going to have to have some kind of books. But one of the solutions that was suggested by Dr. Lawson, who is one of the commissioners, he's the superintendent of schools in Tullahoma, is that they often use older books and then supplement them with primary sources. So that's a possibility to be considered, but you have to go back a ways before you find older books that aren't almost as bad as the ones that are on the slate right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Archer. Like I said, Mr. Odom addressed a lot of these concerns at the end of the meeting, and any board members making comments they want to at that time also. Next, we've got several recognitions, and the first one, I'll do the first one, just for our past school board member, Mr. Tim Tackett. Mr. Tackett, we've got a plaque for you up here. If you'll come up, I'd like to present it to you and just read basically what it says here. "In appreciation to Tim Tackett, member of Rutherford County School Board of Education, September 1st, 2010 to October 24th, 2013, who provided unselfish devotion and service to the students, teachers, and citizens of Rutherford County, presented by Rutherford County Board of Education." I'd just like to thank you once again for your service. Any board members want to say anything?
I'll start it off. We're going to miss you, Mr. Tackett.
Don't worry about it. I think that was a rebuttal.
Yeah, I was going to say, you might want to have a rebuttal. We've been friends for quite some time, but you'll be sorely missed here. Your ability to share your thoughts and your feelings in your heart will be missed by all of us, and, you know, God bless you and your family for all the years of service that you've given to our children here in Rutherford County, not only as a teacher, as an administrator, as a coach. You know, it's tough to not see you sitting over there right now. Mr. Odom, I was going to, Mr. Chairman, I was going to put a MTSU blue sweater, but he asked me not to. So he said he wasn't dead, he was just moving on to something else. And wish you long life and happiness, but again, thank you for all that you've done. You've certainly been a breath of fresh air for us. Thank you, Mr. Tackett.
Anybody else?
Well, the only thing that makes this kind of sweet, the bittersweetness, is what you're moving on to. And for any who don't know, Mr. Tackett is taking a position within the system, and, you know, we will continue to benefit from all of the things that Wayne said so well and your skills and perspectives, so thank you for your continued service.
Mr. Tackett, it's been a pleasure working with you. It's been really great to see you sitting over there and know that your wisdom that you imparted to us did help us make decisions throughout the time we've had together. I just want to say thank you.
Y'all noticed I did bring my wife, so she could hear all this.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's on tape.
What else?
I can only echo everything that's been said here. We are going through the mission, so thank you. Good luck and...
If I may, let me just address, firstly, it's truly been my honor to work with all you folks along with three other past board members that we worked with on the board previous to that, Mr. Odom, Mr. Gill, as directors of schools as well. It's certainly been a privilege for me to do that, and I'm excited about the opportunity I'm in now as athletic director for Rutherford County Schools and getting to work more closely with the principals and athletic directors and coaches and kids and hopefully make the right decisions there. But it's truly been my honor to serve. I get asked, and I'm sure you do the same thing sometimes, do you enjoy being on the school board? I think that's a difficult question to answer, because I don't know if enjoy would be the right word. I'm not sure that you, but it was certainly rewarding, and ninety-nine percent of the time, it was a great thing to do. Once in a while, it became difficult, and you wrestle with some things, and you guys will continue to do that. But again, it's been my honor to do that, and I appreciate your friendship, and that certainly will continue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tackett.
He's already been busy with meeting with athletic directors and principals and that sort of thing. Even today, you've involved...
What's cool is that if he did anything to make you mad as a board member, now that you're his boss, this could be fun to watch.
Everybody's going to want to see where he sits when the ballgame's over. Is he going to be athletic director of both teams?
I suspect so.
All right, next, we've got some more recognitions, and I'm going to let Mr. Odom do those.
It's my privilege to do this. We're tonight recognizing some coaches for the Tennessee Secondary School Athletic Association. They're actually coaches of the year. Athletics is one of those things that is a hook to hold some students in school, but it also develops the boys and girls. It brings them to sometimes team sports, sometime for individual achievement, but lots of encouragement from coaches to do that and mold them to the athletes that they are, and you have championship teams. But I'm going to ask that, and the principals are here with them tonight, too, but I'm going to ask first, if you'll come up to the microphone first. Recognized is Mr. Al Evans, Oakland High School, has been named the Tennessee Coach of the Year for track and field. Mr. Evans, would you come up? Ms. Spurlock, come up with you. Tell us a little bit about the challenges you see, and I know you enjoy being that coach, so tell us.
Well, you know, it's thirty-four years of this, a couple of years down the road, but let me share, actually, Bill and I had coached against each other, and one of the most interesting things, I think, as far as a coach is, is my best friends are my rival coaches. We've learned how to work together, and it's kind of like just a network of, or a family, better yet to say, of coaches that learn from our experiences. As far as getting into coaching, you know, many, many years ago, there was one particular experience from a coach that made all the difference in my life, and it happened strictly by just accident. I had this coaches came up and talked to me, and I wouldn't run, didn't want to, and Coach Bryant McDaniel finally convinced me to run. But it wasn't until a particular incident in which I saw a picture of him standing next to a person, and I recognized the person, and I said, I don't know who that is. And he proceeded to tell me how they met, and that story made a big difference in my life. He was at Austin Peay State University, and he was in the stands, and practice was over, and the kids had gone home, and he heard the whipping sound of a blanket go across the top barbed wire fence around the stadium. That area was in a pretty rough part of town, and it was a project right next to the university football field. And he saw a body go across the top of the wire fence and crash into the grass and brushed himself off and proceeded to run. And as this young person came around the corner, their eyes became large like a silver dollar, and they locked eyes, and she was scared. He said, it's okay. It's fine. He said, why are you in here? She said, doctors told me that I'd never be able to run. And he said, well, looks like you're running pretty good to me. And he said, let me help you. And he helped her for a couple of months, and he helped her in high school, and then later on, she went to TSU, and she was in nineteen sixty Olympics, and she had three gold medals around her neck. Her name was Walt Rudolph. He made a difference in her life, and when they told me that story, I said, maybe that's what I could do somewhere down the road. And so I hope that I've at least had some impact on some kids, and I've had some pretty tough kids, and if I can make a difference in their life, whether it's track or anything, that's my goal. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. I'm going to ask now, Mr. Dallas Hill, and call on Jeff Martin, if you'd like to, and Mr. Bridgman with him, if you would come up, please, at this time. And Dallas Hill is, of course, Segal High School. He's the Tennessee Coach of the Year for golf.
Yes.
So tell us kind of how you got into this and how long you've been doing it, this sort of thing.
Well, I've been teaching, this is my third or first year in golf. I've been coaching eleven years. Been blessed and fortunate enough to have some pretty good golfers, and last year, we had a state team. I've also been blessed with being able to work with great administration and fellow teachers and coaches that I've worked with. I'm not sure how they select the coaches of the year. I guess they have to have a recommendation by someone, but I always like to think that I'm one of the good guys, if you will. I don't cause much of a ruckus around everywhere else, but I'm good with kids that I have, and I'm very fortunate, like I said, and blessed to have those kind of players that I've had in the past, and I think, I'd like to think that I've made a difference in my actions around them and hopefully having good teams that are always good sportsmen and everything else that goes along with it. But I'm very honored to have Coach of the Year by the title of the NCAA and the NFHS that's named us, but look forward to having hopefully some more. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Martin is Tennessee Coach of the Year for tennis. Tell us something about your coaching.
Well, I've been teaching here in Rutherford County for fourteen and a half years. The tennis job kind of fell in my lap after Segal had opened, and Mr. Nolan called me into the office in the spring, and I had helped out with soccer, and he said he needed a tennis coach, and some of the players had suggested me, so I got put in that position. So I've been very blessed with athletes, and I've always said that good players will make up for a lot of poor decisions, and that helps a lot. This is not really so much about me, but I think the program and the athletes that we've had, the parents that we have had, parents I know can be a blessing or a curse, but we've been very fortunate and a lot of hard work, and of course, the administration, beginning with Mr. Nolan and certainly now with Mr. Bridgman, has been more than supportive and has helped us to maintain that level. We like to consider ourselves one of the top public schools for tennis, and we hope to continue that trend for at least a few more years. But I'm very honored and certainly appreciate the recognition here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. The great thing about coaches like these here tonight, they get students to achieve things that they didn't think they could do. They move them to a higher level than they have that expectation very often for themselves, and your skill at doing that is the reason you're one of the coaches of the year this year with TD of the NCAA. So congratulations again to you.
Number eight, I believe we've got a report by Mr. Reed from last board meeting.
As the board may recall, the board requested I research what was involved with respect to the Board of Education possibly requesting waivers from the State Department of Education with respect to which textbooks are used in the school system. As you recall, there were a number of speakers we had present at the Board of the last set of meetings that presented statutes to you and concerns with respect to certain textbooks that have been used in the system and certain textbooks that have been approved by the state. I have, I did review the state codes that pertain to the state textbook commission. As you all know already, but for the benefit of those people at home, we do have a state textbook commission with the State Department of Education that's charged with the task of approving textbooks in Tennessee. That textbook commission is charged with the responsibility of finding at least four books for each subject area that are approved for Tennessee classes, and those four textbooks are then presented to school systems throughout the state for the school system to select one or more of these particular books to be chosen for their school system. That system's been in place for a number of years and has kind of been the same that way for decades now. With respect to the state law, state law says the Board of Education has to use books that are on the state-approved list, except unless you obtain a waiver. And there is a provision for the state code for Boards of Education to request a waiver, and what the law reads, it says, "Upon application of the local Board of Education, the Commissioner of Education may waive this restriction when, in the Commissioner's judgment, the unique or..." the unique or unusual needs of the school system require it. Now, the restriction it's, it is referencing here is the state code that says it is unlawful for a Board of Education or for a teacher to use a textbook other than what's on the state approved list, unless you obtain this waiver. So there is a mechanism in the law then that would allow the Board of Education to request a waiver before the Commissioner of Education, of the Board of Education decides that's something that is appropriate to do. It's very important that the school system decides to go that route, that you do actually obtain a waiver for the textbook you choose to use. Because should you use a textbook that you don't obtain a waiver for, you have, first of all, it potentially puts your teachers in violation of state law. And secondly, it can cost you BEP funding for, about, from the state with respect to textbooks. So if it looks like the school system is inclined to use a textbook other than what's on the state approved list, it would be prudent for the Board of Education to obtain a waiver from the Commissioner of Education before you do that. Now, I did speak with people at the State Textbook Commission and spoke with the Commissioner about the process of obtaining a waiver. And they do entertain requests for waivers. They have done that before. And would be open to request, to, to entertain requests from waivers from the school system if the, if they deem the request, request to be appropriate. And if the book that's selected meets the state standards. It's very important if the school system decides to go this route that any other book that we propose for the state to adopt for the school system has to comply and meet with state standards. Because as you know, all our students within the school system will be tested on a certain subject area. And those subject areas have various different facts and things that have to be taught to our students. So it's very important for our students to be exposed to that information and make sure the information they're exposed to completely covers the assessment and testing that you get from the state. Because you want, Rutherford County has been very blessed, but we've done very well as a school system with respect to our grading and our scoring by our students in the school system. And we would want to continue that. So part of that process is the testing that students undergo in the school system. So to make sure that the information is covered, we do then make sure if we do go the route of trying to get a textbook that's not on one of these approved lists, that we choose textbooks that do cover all these areas that our students will be tested on. So it would require a process for someone at the school system level to go through and review these books to make sure any book that's being selected that's not on the state approved list does comply with the state standards and will cover the subject areas upon which our students are going to be tested. So, but that's a process to go through. It's not necessarily anything automatic. The state has forms and a process for doing that. If the school system finds it appropriate to do it, there's a process to go through that we would have to comply with. But if the school system did, was granted a waiver by the State Department of Education with respect to using a different book other than one of, of the approved books, you could use that book in, in the school system. Now, without risking the loss of BEP funding or risking violation of state law. Now, the only other caveat which I mentioned to you is one of the things with, that these textbook publishers have been required to do with the state is basically when they present a book for submission to the state for the state's consideration, they have to, the publisher has to commit to basically making that book available usually for six years or so. Because usually most textbooks in Tennessee has a six-year cycle. So that means once you start using a book, once you get a new book for this year, you want to be able to use that book for a minimum period of maybe six years. So you would hope to use that same book. So while a school system may order, you know, whatever, five thousand of this certain type of book for one year, as you get more students coming down the path over the next couple of years, you may need additional books. So the state has always wanted to make sure that those books are still available because you want your, all your students being taught from the same book. So along those lines, the state has always required that publishers who have books on the state approved list basically make a commitment to have those books available for a minimum of three years and usually for as long as six years, which is a financial commitment on the part of the publishers to basically say, we will keep this book in publication. And should a school system order this book two years down the road from today, we will pledge to have that book still available for publication and make that book available to be purchased should a school system need to purchase it. So that's another caveat of this that the board needs to keep in mind. So to the extent you're looking at other textbooks and do consider other textbooks beyond those on the state approved list, do look, need to look at the publisher of that book and make sure you get some commitments from that publisher that that book will be available for hopefully the six-year period that we typically use for a textbook cycle. So, so that's what we found from the, with respect to waivers of textbooks. If there's any questions of any board members, I'm happy to address those.
Mr. Holliday. Seems like a strange question, but do you happen to know in, in your research, the State Textbook Commission, how many members are on there?
Oh, I can't, but the speakers probably know more than I know on that. So I, they are appointed. And I, I don't know to what extent they have training with respect to their field before they're appointed for those positions.
That's fine. I just, it's one thing that I haven't been able to come up with, but I'll, I'll find the answer.
That information is on the first, on the Monday video.
Anybody else? All right, Mr. Reed, thank you. Some board members may have some additional questions at the end, after Mr. Odom gets done speaking. Number nine, Mr. Odom.
Number nine is the application for extended learning programs for two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen. The extended contract application allocation for two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen school year has been received. Rutherford County's allocation of one hundred and six thousand nine hundred dollars was substantially reduced this year by the Tennessee Department of Education compared to the two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve, and two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen allocations. The Extended Contract Committee is seeking approval to submit the application using the program parameters that Rutherford County has been using for the past several years. Those parameters in priority order are, one, summer school, and two, school year high school online enrichment and credit recovery programs. Recommended approval, motion to approve Rutherford County Schools Extended Learning Programs application for two thousand thirteen, fourteen, using the following parameters. One, summer school. And two, school year high school online enrichment and credit recovery programs. We have always traditionally put as priority one, summer school because as a rule with these monies, any funds not expended on a lower priority can be moved up to a higher priority. So if, if you did not expend all of your monies on the enrichment and credit recovery online, you can then automatically use that, Jeff can use that remaining fund for summer school. So that's why you prioritize it, one of the reasons why anyway.
So moved. Got a motion by Mr. Flair and a second by Ms. Blankenship. Any further discussion? Call and favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number ten, ten aye.
Number ten is facilities, and A is baseball fence at Christiana Middle School. Mr. Bobhorn, principal of Christiana Middle School, has requested permission to install a new fence at the outfield perimeter of the baseball field. This fence replaces the existing fence and moves the boundary in about fifteen feet. It will be constructed of solid black metal at no cost to the Rutherford County School Board and funded through donors. Recommended approval, motion to approve construction of a black metal baseball outfield fence at Christiana Middle School at no cost to the Rutherford County School Board.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Nipper and a second by Ms. Holliday. Any further discussion on this? Call and favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. B.
B is Blackman Elementary School Eagle Scout Project. Ms. Cynthia Ford, principal of Blackman Elementary School, has requested permission to assist Ricardo A. De Leon Guzman with an Eagle Scout Project. Ricardo is proposing to plant six deciduous trees at an equal distance around the perimeter of the existing pervious concrete walking track at the intersection of Fortress Boulevard and Blaze Drives. This project will be at no cost to the Rutherford County School Board. Recommended approval, motion to approve planting of six deciduous trees at Blackman Elementary School to assist Ricardo A. De Leon Guzman with an Eagle Scout Project at no cost to the Rutherford County School Board.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Flair and a second by Ms. Holliday. Any further discussion on this?
Just that we continue to be blessed by Eagle Scout, Eagle Scout projects. Seems like every year we, we have the advantage of at least two. And that's been going on for over ten years, so.
Anybody else? Call and favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. C.
C is the Rutherford County Schools Energy Management Guidelines. And if you remember, we did receive a grant from the state to, to work on this, employed a person, and now guidelines and equipment that are following. In order for Rutherford County Schools to conserve energy and maintain energy conservation, a set of guidelines has been prepared for the entire system. The document is presented for the review of the Rutherford County School Board. These guidelines and the board's support are very important to the system's energy conservation effort since they will be used to express the collective responsibility for all employees, auxiliary and support staff, and community groups. The recommended approval, a motion to approve the Energy Management Guidelines as presented, which is in your, the tab.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Nipper and a second by Ms. Blankenship. Any further discussion? Call and favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number eleven.
Number eleven, and this is a student discipline appeal. Do you wanna handle any of that, Ms. McLeod? I, I'll read it or if they have a question, Ms. McLeod's here. The board has been requested to review the October eighteenth, two thousand thirteen decision of the disciplinary hearing authority to uphold the expulsion of a student from Oakland High School. The student was expelled from Oakland High School for possession of a weapon on school grounds. This review is pursuant to the provisions of policy six point three one seven. The policy states the board shall review the record or the report and shall, one, you may affirm the decision of the disciplinary hearing authority or overturn the decision of the DHA or modify the decision of the DHA to a lesser penalty, except in cases of zero tolerance violations. Or grant a second hearing, which will be before the board, or deny requests for a board hearing.
Move to affirm the decision of the DHA.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Flair and a second by Ms. Holliday. Any further discussion?
I would note that this is a zero tolerance offense and the board was provided with those details in our work session on Tuesday and reviewed them in the time between that meeting and this one.
Thank you, Ms. Holliday. Call and favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number twelve, that's your homework, study the policies. Thirteen, Mr. Odom, you just wanna mention a few words on that. We discussed that the other night.
We talked, the, we will be doing rezoning Oakland Middle School. Of course, we've already had to add our newest, one of our newest middle schools. We've had to already add portables in the eleven hundred range of students. So we're having to look at rezoning to try to balance a little bit better. And as I mentioned the other night, we'll probably be looking at, at least from Oakland Middle to Whitworth Buchanan and probably around to Christiana to make the lines a little bit smoother and a way to, to handle that better. It's also a possibility that we'll bring to you a, a look at Rockvale. Rockvale grew a hundred and fourteen students this year in one year. So that's an issue in that area. So when we, we have the meeting, we have a meeting set all the way with our principals. They're involved in schools. They'll come in and look at some of our first drafts of drawings, see if they see any particular issues or problems with it. And then we'll bring that to the board for you to consider. And I'm sure you'll set up public hearings, at least one or more, for people to express their thoughts on these.
Anybody got comments? All right, fourteen, general discussion. As I said, we'll, we'll let Mr. Odom go over his. He wants to speak in regards to a lot of your questions out there, so. Mr. Odom, I'll turn it over to you and then any board members can comment and discuss any other items.
Ms. Archer and Ms. Moore, I think I've seen her tonight, but I did log on and watched part of that. It's archived and it is under the state legislature. Anyone that wants, would like to watch a hearing or any of the sessions, they do archive them when they have a session and do that. I listened specifically to, to yours and Ms. Moore's section. I learned some things too. And I guess one of the things that bothered me is it did them, that in the review of the textbooks, that they weren't really being checked for accuracy, but more alignment to standards that the state. And I think probably your actions and from what I was listening to with the legislators in that, that probably the textbook commission's gonna have a, a much deeper assignment maybe in, than in previous years to also try to, to check the accuracy of that. BIS and that sort of thing. In, in the world of social studies, lots of disagreements very often between social studies people about BIS. So you, that, that's not as uncommon, but factual information should absolutely be correct. And I think that's something we're interested in. So talk a little bit about how the process works for the local school systems. Basically, what we do is we will have committees. And in Rutherford County typically, because of our organizational structure, we will have a K-five committee. We will have a middle school committee, which is typically six-eight. And we'll have a high school committee. And of course, they consider each time whatever textbook is being adopted. Rutherford County will spend somewhere, Jeff's not here now, but it depends upon the adoption. If it's a book that's used by almost all students, math is very expensive. Reading typically goes through elementary grades and maybe up into the middle, but not always through high school. So anywhere between, between two and a half to four million dollars in textbooks a year. So it, it's something very expensive for us and, and a part of your budget to do that. So everybody takes it quite seriously. So what we do, we set up these committees. Now, the committees will then come in and, and review the books. The books are very often furnished to us by the publishers. We don't go out and buy it, but most publishers say, we're gonna consider books, your books. Please furnish our committee with copies of the books to look at. What I'm really interested in doing and what we will do, that these committees are established. Mr. Zago is Assistant Student Lieutenant for Curriculum Instruction. I would like for one or two members of something for your committee when, say, the K-five committee meets, when the middle schools, to come in and meet with that group, talk to that group about what you found and what books, some books that you may find, that you found that seemed to meet most. I was interested in your testimony in sometime, and the testimony, one of them said that some books had numerous errors, some had a few areas, errors that you might could deal with. If teachers knew ahead of time their errors there, and others that had very few errors. But if you've already done that research in that particular part, I mean, we don't need to do that again. So we're gonna make that available to you, to do that, to come in and talk. And, and that will probably be, I don't know, next month or two typically?
Yeah, in the next few weeks, I've talked to all three of the coordinators. I've provided that time for one or two of each one of the, the periods to talk. I think high school and middle school will be together because they have very similar. And then K-five will be a separate, so we'll be at two, uh, two different events.
Typically, the person that chairs the committee is our elementary coordinator for elementary, our middle school coordinator for middle, and our high school coordinator for high school. It's typically the person that chairs it. They then will select, most of the time it's teachers that will come together because they're the ones that are gonna be teaching the book. They're the ones that are looking for alignment. And, and one of the things that we really check, we're careful, and Rutherford County's done this better than, and very often many of the other school systems, i- is to check the alignment of the standards. Basically, what, what is in the book and how does that align with the standards that the test will be based upon. The report card will come out in a week or two now. We've gotten a, a preview of it. Rutherford County's scores for social studies are typically in the ninety percent range. I mean, it's really very high. So it's very important to the teachers and the people that's there that, that the textbook that you have, even though very often was, was said in, in that the textbook is one of the tools. It's not the only tool that a teacher uses. I'll, I'll tell you that typically in the elementary classroom, where that elementary teacher is doing science, social studies, math, reading, language arts, most of the time now we can get art and music off of them. But they have so many preparations, they will tend to follow a book more closely than you'll have maybe somebody in middle school or high school. Because typically, those people are certified in that subject area, you know, for it, be it social studies, you know, or economics or geography or whatever. And social studies cover so many books. It's not just the history. It does cover a number of other things. Psychology was one of the books mentioned. So what we want you to do is come and meet with those committees. And we need your... So what we want you to do is come and meet with those committees, and we need your information about your findings related to that, so that as they begin to go through these books, and look at them, then they can go to that page number and that reference that you're making, and, and see it for themselves, too. And then what we'll come back, as the process goes through, and they have multiple meetings together, typically, they, they look at them. Sometimes I'll ask the publisher to come back in and say, you know, what is, you know, this book, what about this book, are there other resources? Now, one of the things that's very, been very beneficial to us in Rutherford County in recent years, many of the larger publishers now also post the textbook online. And that's been very nice, because as parents know, if the child says, hey, I forgot my textbook today and didn't bring it home, oh yes, but we can, we can access it online, you know. So that's very good to do that. They don't give you any break. If you buy the book, they'll give you the online, but they'll not give you the online without the, the book. So it's important that your publisher, and, and Mr. Reed referenced a few things, there typically per grade in Rutherford County, about three thousand plus students, and we grew by over a thousand students this year in K through twelve. So you're looking at somebody that does have a capacity, basically, as you grow, because we will not publish six years of social studies books this next year, because you don't know how many children are coming in, and specifically, you know, what subjects. So when we do an adoption year, we will purchase books for the students we have for that adoption, be it math, be it reading, be it social studies, and then we have to publish from math, and science, and all the other areas, growth books to add to that. So that's why that six-year cycle, you know, is basically there. So what you look for in your publishers, too, as we question them, is, you know, that promise, and that's a commitment, and, and I hope, even if the state changes the textbook commission, the state has more power than we do, because they're speaking for a hundred and thirty-plus school districts in a sense, that they are able to get commitments from, continued commitments from these publishers for the, the term of the adoption, because it really gets to be problems if you're, if you cannot maintain that particular adoptive cycle. So, so what we're saying to you tonight is we do plan to look at the material that you have, what you have. You have some suggested books, we will want to know the names of those and see, and then we'll go through this process. Now, the process is rather lengthy. The state doesn't ask us to report an adoption to them until typically April, so we, we take our time. It's not something we're going to do in two weeks, or three weeks, or asked to do it, because these teams get back together and review, what did you find this time? Did you find any standards? Now, now typically, when you look at standards, there's not any one textbook that covers every Tennessee standard, because textbooks are written typically by the publisher for all fifty states, and the textbook, and the ones that have the most influence are, in this are California, Texas, and Florida, why? Because they buy the most textbooks. So if they have standards that are a little different from ours, there would be some Texas standard and some others. So when, when we review this and say, yeah, that standard's there, they gave two paragraphs to it, you know, and it's not in depth enough to handle, so, I mean, that, that would become a negative. So you begin to score these, and look and see at what level they met that standard, at least that teachers could use in all in the classroom. So, again, it, it's a, it's an involved process to do. So we'll make recommendations again to the board, but it would, it'll be late March or April, I would say, before we do that. Now, there's two or three things that's already happened. Basically, Tennessee got out the standards so late this year. I mean, it was, it was unusual. They have, they've already sent out this week a thing for, they'll be looking for people to begin reviewing math textbooks, which will be all through next year, so they're beginning to collect names of people that would be willing to, to do that. But when they, when they got it so late, what has happened now, to our understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Zago, is in K-five, I don't think we have a single textbook submitted by a publisher. There's something very similar, and y'all mentioned this in the testimony, it's kind of like weekly readers, or something, in topics. Of course, Scholastic and Weekly Reading, some of them have done that, but we have to ask ourselves, too, does it cover geography? Does it also cover history? Does it, do the others, and how well are they going to be aligned to standards? If we stay with the books we already have, you know, what's the probability of being able to get, I mean, you could get twelve years out of sync, if you see what I'm saying, if it's six years and you're trying to depend on six more. So I don't know where that's going, and, and it's interesting to me that textbook publisher didn't do that. The, the textbook publisher that you objected to most last year for middle school, Holt, has withdrawn their textbook from Tennessee. So you're not going to be looking for a new adoption from Holt. They're not submitting one. So it's going to obviously be another publisher to look at. So it, it's an evolving process that, that starts usually a year or more ahead with the state getting readers for it, and coming up and culminating with a textbook commission, and then followed up with our local school district looking at the textbook. So that's kind of the process and how it works.
Mr. Young?
Can you share with us who approves the test standards and how that is done in Tennessee?
The, the standards are, are adopted by the State Board of Education. Typically, the, the Tennessee Department of Education will take a set of standards, and i- if they make their own, they'll have committees that'll work a year or two ahead to do those standards, and then they have to present it to the State Board of Education, who then has to have the two or three readings to cover those standards. Now, and I said all that to answer your question. That, that set of standards is then typically given to a testing company, who, who receives a state bid for the test to create, the math test, the social studies test, the science test. Well, what the testing company is going to do is then look at that standard, and then try to look at their test bank of questions, see how many questions they have that's to do that, that can cover that standard, how well it covers it. Tennessee has a, a kind of unique law, in that one of their requirements, you can have a non-redundant testing process. So what that means is, the question that was on the two thousand thirteen, the standard will be tested again, but you're not likely to see that question in two thousand fourteen, that it has to be fresh and non-redundant. So they're large metrics, and they check it for clarity supposedly, and all that sort of thing, dealing with the testing thing, but that's a bid process from the state.
No local decisions are made on the testing?
No, 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 we have, we have virtually none, and, and part of this is because some of that's a no child left behind law, because you know the accountability measures and all the things that attach to that. Basically, they, they require us, and a no child left behind, you have to do the reading language arts, you have to do the mathematics, you don't have a direct accountability on science, but you're required to report it, that's on the state report card for public to see, as is social studies and some of the others, so all, all of those are requirements with part of this.
Mr. Holliday?
Mr. Odom, do you consider the revelation that little to no consideration was given for content or bias, and, and the review was really for compliance to the state standard? Do you consider the lack of interest in content or bias to be a unique circumstance that would justify a waiver?
What we have to do, when you talk waiver, it, it could, yes. I mean, we've got to know what's, what's correct or incorrect. I mean, we reject books every year. I mean, is it going to be one, there's one's going to be selected, that you do, and I mean, for a number of reasons. I mean, alignment to standards, you know, if we find errors in that, and, and the committee will divide up usually to different ones to see that, but you, you know, there are, there are misprints, and then there are just plain errors. You know, typically, you'll find misprints in books and that sort of thing to do, but, but what you find most often is, again, because textbooks cover a number of states and areas, is how closely aligned those standards may be to your state to include it in those, those topics. So one of the things that state always looks for, and we, we look at it again, is that alignment, because come April and May, when our elementary, middle, and then the high school for end of course sits down and takes a test, it's going to come from questions that the test publisher, creator, has pulled from those standards. So it behooves us, if our kids are going to compete for scholarships, and national merit, and all of those things that are attached to testing, it's just, it's not the favorite game, the testing that we're in, but it, it is there. And it behooves us to, to try to align as close as we can to that, prepare those students. We've been doing pretty good at that.
I, I certainly understand, and I, and I'm, I'm thrilled and, and supportive that we do well on tests, and I want to continue to do that. But we've established in the discussion that none of the textbooks are going to meet one hundred percent of the criteria.
Right.
And so, compliance to the criteria cannot be the sole objective, and I think that citizens of Rutherford County, unique perhaps in the state of Tennessee, have really brought to the forefront the need for a consideration for bias, and a consideration for content in these textbooks. I think that there is an opportunity for us to continue to support our citizenship, and our, the, the citizens who have, who have worked very hard, and give strong consideration to a waiver.
And, and it may, it may be one of the books, see, they named some books, they named it at the hearing, but there's some books that would be acceptable. That wouldn't require a waiver, so, I mean, it's not an automatic thing that you, you do a waiver, so I mean, I mean, we just, you just got to look at the books and see. And how many errors in it, are there two errors in this book? Are there seventy-five errors in this book? I mean, and they, they've got that information, that's what we need from them, rather than us trying to go out and see if we can uncover that again, and that's why I want to make them a part of it.
At the same time, I think it would be important for us to express to those that we charge from our central office to take a look at this, that not only are we looking for compliance in Rutherford County, but in Rutherford County, we also want there to be a non-bias, neutral text that also does not have content errors. And if we add that to the criteria in Rutherford County, then we've gone above and beyond what the state requires, which is what we do so well in Rutherford County, is to achieve beyond what the state requires. I think that high standard is still applicable to what we're doing here.
The only thing that, that is most concerned for me is the term bias. For example, in economics book, if, if you're a Keynesian theorist in economics, or you're not, whoever, whomever wrote that book may have a little particular leaning on whether it, that's where the teachers come in, and ask the kids, what, what about this? Could you challenge this author's opinion in that? So, and that's the toughest part, is to, I think you're going to find in many social studies some bias, but it shouldn't be incorrect. I mean, we shouldn't find, and it has to open up the opportunity for kids, if they're going to think on their own, to be able to examine that. I mean, even in AP, in the AP world, they'll very often throw out a challenge, it's kind of like training lawyers. You take this case, it may not be one that you'd want to have, how would you defend this person? So very often in a classroom, a teacher may divide up a class and say, okay, you take this position, you take this position, and now let's discuss it, and, and you argue that position, and then you come back, and people then begin to draw conclusions from that. And, and that's a part of the learning process, and one side will be biased than the other. So, I mean, I'm, I'm trying to, to answer, but to say that, that...
Bias may exist, but we want to...
Bias, will probably exist some.
Sure, I understand, but neutrality is, is certainly our goal, and it's something that we need to state. I also want to point out that because we strive to teach subjects that the students are interested in, and that allow us to achieve at a high level, we already have several waiver textbooks where perhaps no textbook was approved, and so in Rutherford County, we have waiver textbooks. It's not an out of the ordinary, it won't be an exceptional thing if we find the need for a waiver. And, and again, I think that we've really hit on something here. I think we're going to see the state legislature respond to it, and all those kind of things, but we're going to put in place an adoption here in two thousand fourteen that will extend all the way to two thousand twenty. Understood that we've got to have the support of publishers to be able to continue to accommodate growth and those type of things, but we just cannot ignore the consideration for bias, or the, or the scrutiny of content, along with compliance to the standards.
I was with eleven legislators today in the area with the school superintendents and all to do that. They're very cognizant of this, and I think you'll see the process. I think you'll see textbook commission checking for more than probably just alignment to standards, and I would hope so.
I believe it will.
You know, they, I mean, they, they say to us, they don't really realize, sometimes when they're voting, all, I mean, it's complex for them, too, so I think you, I think, without a doubt, you'll see a change with that.
It's just unfortunate...
And it should be, should be.
It, it should be. There's not a lot of room for error in mathematics, or bias, and this happens to be the social studies adoption. This is a problematic place, and I think that extra effort from Rutherford County may prove to put us, again, ahead of the pack.
Thank you, Mr. Holliday. Anybody else? I'd like to just personally thank your committee, Mr. Reed's homework he did, and, and Mr. Odom's explanation. What Mr. Odom needs, or what I'm going to request from Mr. Odom, to have one contact person, to basically keep you informed of when to meet and stuff like that, to where he's not having to contact twenty different people or whatever, so if there's somebody that is going to be Mr. Odom's contact, just let him know after the meeting, and if we can work like that, so if that's agreeable, if there's... Anything else?
Some good news, I think, and may have gotten from Mr. Evans, and I'm not sure of the, I get confused with the acronym, is it?
NAEP, NAEP today?
Yes, sir. Who threw us under the bus, and should have, for a failure for truth in advertising in our scores before the, the academic regimen became much more difficult over the years, but gave us very good scores for the achievement progress that's been made here in Tennessee over the last several years. So that, that was some of the good news for, for an association that slapped our hands pretty hard, but then gave us a pat on the back this week, so that was good news.
What he's referring to, Governor Peterson did have a press release today in Wilson County, that the National Assessment for Educational Progress, NAEP, and so, we don't even know what their standards are necessarily, but they give tests all over the country. Rutherford County participates in those tests, you know, and it's really kind of from fourth grade through twelfth, and all they do is sampling. So Tennessee, this year, had the fastest growth in the nation for the two thousand and thirteen, and they, they do the NAEP test every other year, had the fastest growth in the nation in the achievement for the, and the NAEP assessment covers those four major subject areas. So it was something like a twenty-two point gain. The next closest state to us was something like fourteen point gain. Now, I mean, it moved us up in, in ranking, ten, twelve, so ranking state points, you know, and so, some, but it's, it's these administrators and teachers out there that are delivering this, that, that are looking at this and challenging these students. And I tell you what, the students across the state, in Rutherford County, are stepping up to the plate, when the demands are higher, and they're asked to do stuff at, at a higher level, they're delivering on it, and that's why Tennessee got up to that. And isn't it wonderful, you know, I'm here as a director, and you're here as board members, to get to be a part of that? If, you know, for what you do, is you look at budgets, you look at all of these approval things that you do, to get to be a part of seeing our students growing faster than anybody else in the, in the nation. We're not where we need to be, but we're growing faster than anybody else, at least on this assessment.
I think we moved up, like, forty-one to thirty-one on a lot of the boards, so that speaks volumes there.
It does. And, and that's not us measuring ourselves, that's somebody else measuring us.
Very critical entity measuring us.
Absolutely, one that's recognized by Congress and everybody else.
Mr. Holliday?
I wanted to jump back on the agenda for a moment and speak to the coaches of the year. We certainly acknowledge and recognize the achievements, but I think it's important, I, I remember Donald Jernigan saying, there should be ways that we can teach character and citizenship as well as academics, and I think that a lot of those character points are, are taught by our coaches. There are a lot of things that we learn in the classroom, but on... There are a lot of things that we learn in the classroom, but on the athletic fields and other extracurricular activities, we really create good citizens. And the coaches are to be commended for that. They pull a lion's share of that, administrators as well. These are role models for leadership and for the way to conduct yourself outside of the classroom, not just compliance, but a team spirit and those type of characteristics. We can overlook those things, but we shouldn't, because they are critical to, you know, our continued success, and I think coaches have a lot to do with that. So I again applaud those who are recognized as coach of the year, and all of those coaches, those who are not recognized, but certainly are pulling the weight, teaching character out there.
The budget and finance committee is considering our Smyrna primary project tonight, so as when the meeting's over, I'm going to try to go up there also. I hope we're okay. Ms. Archer and Ms. Moore, if you'll tell Mr. Zago, he's curriculum and instruction of the contact person, please.
Anybody else? Last thing, I've got, just a reminder, building committee meeting next Wednesday, correct? Five thirty?
Correct.
Just a reminder on that. Anything else? Or Jern?